Here.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Here.
Okay, let me have a chance to review the minutes.
I do.
Yes.
Move to the brief.
Second.
Uh, Mr. Lamont?
Yes.
Mr. Hubbard?
I'm staying.
Mr. Schlafter?
Stange.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Okay. So if you'd let the record reflect that, uh, Trustee Hayes will be assuming his seat and Trustee Levine will be returning to the chief's seat. So there is no old business on our agenda, so we can move to new business, but before I do so, those that are going to speak, uh, tonight, do you please stand and raise your right hand and I'll swear you're in? Anyone that's gonna speak?
Uh, I don't see any questions, I won't speak.
Alright. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is of truth to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Alright, thank you very much. First item is a conditional use for a semi-public use within an A3 district for the property located at 3730 Hur Road, parcel number 78-29319, Savannah Township Zoning Regulation Section 502. Darrell, can you give, uh, your comments, please?
The subject property at 3730 Hur Road is currently owned A3 agriculture and used for agricultural purposes. No buildings or structures exist on the site. The applicant is applying for a conditional use for a semi-public use in order to construct and operate a place of religious worship on the site. Semi-public uses are only permitted by a light and C2 zone districts and the A and R zone districts allow semi-public uses only through an approved conditional use from the Savannah Township Board of Zoning Appeals. Surrounding uses are primarily agriculture that in all probability will be developed as large lot residential within a few years. Large lot residential currently exists across Hur Road to the west of the subject parcel. The 6.55 acre site has 320 feet of frontage on Hur Road and an approximate depth of 890 feet. The proposed 10,500 square foot church would be sighted 162.8 feet from the public right-of-way. Potential future expansion would place the church 122.8 feet from the right-of-way. Section 503 of the Savannah Township Zoning Resolution requires a minimum front setback of 60 feet. Submitted site plan also indicates two other potential future expansions on either side of the church. Allowing for these expansions, the proposed project still meets the minimum side setback requirement of 20 feet. Other possible future additions to the site include a 7,680-foot square, square foot fellowship hall and a 300 square foot garage. The site will be accessed via a 20-foot wide drive. Parking will be provided on the center of the site behind the main structure. Parking requirements of Section 2914 of the zoning resolution dictate that this facility should have a minimum of 24 parking spaces. The site plan indicates 44 spaces will be provided. There are no landscaping requirements for a semi-public use within a residential district. However, as the subject's site abuts probable residential use or zoning to the south, zoning staff recommends that the BZA attach, as a condition of approval to this request, adequate screening and no landscaping be installed along the southern property line to mitigate potential negative impacts upon the residential property. On April 24th, 2019, this conditional use request was heard by the Lucas County Plan Commission. That body voted unanimously to recommend approval of the request to the BZA, subject to 43 conditions submitted by the various local government agencies. The proposed project meets all the development requirements of the zoning resolution. Any future expansions or additional uses may require an amendment to the approved conditional use. Per Section 2509 of the zoning resolution, a conditional use shall expire within two years, if not utilized within that time period. A two-year extension may be requested by the applicant. Semi-public and public uses such as schools, parks, libraries, cultural centers, and places of worship are considered fundamental components of a community. With their aesthetically pleasing settings and low negative impacts on the surrounding properties, they generally blend favorably into residential areas and serve as a buffer between uses of lesser and higher intensity. Savannah Township zoning staff finds that this proposed conditional use is harmonious with the current uses in the area, should not alter the general vicinity or negatively impact neighboring residential properties, and is consistent with the Savannah Township zoning resolution. Therefore, staff recommends approval with conditions of the conditional use request for a semi-public use in an A3 agricultural zone district for the property located at 3730 Hur Road, for the following three reasons. One, approval of this variance should not alter the intent of the Savannah Township zoning resolution. Two, the proposed use is compatible with the nearby uses. And three, approval of this variance should not present a negative impact upon the public good or neighboring properties or impair the visibility or safety of the traveling public. Staff further recommends that the Board of Zoning Appeals approve the conditional use request subject to the condition that the applicant install adequate screening and no landscaping as determined by the BZA along the rear property line to protect future residential property from any possible negative effects. That should actually read southern property line. Staff additionally recommends to the Board of Zoning Appeals that approval of this conditional use shall be subject to the following 43 conditions submitted by the relevant agencies. Applicants are encouraged to contact each of the agencies to address compliance with those conditions. Those were, those 43 conditions were submitted on the Lucas County Plan Commission report. I will read those unless the board require that I do so.
I think it's necessary at this point in time. You have questions of?
Darrell? I do.
Go ahead.
Darrell, sorry, I didn't prep you for this question, but, uh, 3840, when we, when we did the, when they did the expansion on that, I know the fire department made a comment that originally, something was in there a while ago, they wanted the, they wanted a back, um, driveway so they could access some of those properties. And then when we had, uh, I think this property, the same property again, uh, that was brought up as well, uh, I don't know if they're going to, like, an access road for them, for the fire department? Is there anything in the plans to put something there? Did we follow this at all?
Um, maybe I have to pick him and address that. The, uh, the fire department did review this plan and did not, uh, they're, under the 43 conditions.
It's a new chief, so.
I'm sorry?
It's a new chief.
It was an old chief before. Okay.
Fair enough.
But, um, I mean, yeah, there's no indication that they wanted another drive.
Right. I was just curious, I remember that being an issue before. It was supposed to actually, I'll go back to the notes, but there was, I mean, I think it was supposed to be built before, on another property, not for this property, so. Okay.
Darrell, what's the property to the north? What's the use there?
It is currently A3, um, you're speaking of? This one?
That parcel.
Right.
Right, that's currently A3, it's, I've had discussions with the property owner, um, the possibility of that being developed as commercial or light industrial, basically corresponding with the north side of Resource Park Drive. Whether that will happen or not. I don't know what you're saying, but I think that's kind of the way they're leaning, if they can get the zone change for that. Otherwise, it would be large lot residential. Is that owned by the group that's developing that strip, or? Yeah, the group that owns all these. Okay, so it hasn't been sold to a private owner? Not that I'm aware of, I believe all these are still under ownership. I can't get areas to come up here to check, but that's what you see? I think there's about, what, seven parcels?
Mm-hmm.
I have a question. Somewhere in these notes that I had, they talked about a fence, putting up a fence in the back of the property or the side of the property?
That's a barrier in the south.
Yeah, but it's just, uh, trees. Did I discuss that, or?
No, 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 somewhere in all those people.
You're talking about the reference to screening or landscaping?
Yeah.
Then they, in that condition? Is that what you're getting at?
Right, yeah, I, my recommendation is that there's some kind of landscaping or screening.
On each side?
Not just on the southern side.
Okay. Because that's zone A3? Why are we only doing it one side?
Because the one to the south is in all probability gonna be developed as residential.
And what about the other side?
To the north? That's the one Mr. Schlafter was just asking about, um, I think the intent is to go commercial, light industrial on that, if possible.
Okay.
Still may want 14 on either side.
Yeah. I guess my question is, what if they had a gold residential there? On the other side? Then what happens?
Well, again, there's, there's no requirement that they put any screening or landscaping out.
Well, it was just a, they could put a barrier.
Right, it required a residential, they have to put a fence up.
Okay.
I don't know, that's a counter. Okay.
Do I have any questions to have? Darrell, before we hear from the applicant? Did you, uh, write your name and? Is it there? Okay. Steve Suzanne, should we have the record?
You gotta watch that guy. Uh, Greg Feller, Feller Mission Associates, 1683 Woodland Drive, Longing, here representing applicant. Uh, just to touch on that, um, we are going to, well, obviously submit a landscape plan with a site plan for approval by the township, um, and could agree with Dale's comment about adding a little more landscaping on the south side. And their plan is to landscape the north side as well. So that I'll be showing a detailed landscape plan, that'll be sort of approved. But, you know, they want the site to look really nice as well, so they're planning on doing a good amount of landscaping. Uh, and then there was a comment in there about landscaping along Hur, you know, there's those existing pine trees over there? I mean, south. Obviously, we have to extend a sewer, so a sewer's gonna come down. So we're gonna save the trees if all possible, if we can, to plant a place. I think the landscaping's gonna look really nice.
Greg, on that one, um, we had a couple of issues with, uh, the fact we were doing the Haba House with, obviously, there's no residential there now, but a lot of complaints, even when we did that senior facility, there were a lot of complaints about seeing where the dumpster was going, or, you know, obviously noise and traffic. So when you mentioned the landscaping, are you thinking, I heard you mentioned trees, are you thinking trees that will sort of grow or will be, you know, larger than, I mean, you don't have to have a full answer now, but.
Yeah, I mean, I, I didn't specify exactly what trees they're gonna plant, but, you know, I think the intent is, especially on the south side, to do a, like, evergreen type tree, that'll screen the south side and north side. I don't know if it's gonna be evergreens, or if it's gonna be more bushes and deciduous trees, but they do wanna, they wanna, you know, they all very interested in that, so they're gonna landscape that as well.
And so then, all the, the, like, the trash and stuff like that will be?
There's no dumpster.
No dumpster? Okay.
They dispose of the trash?
Looking for, I was gonna ask you where the dumpster is.
Yeah, no, no.
That's what I was looking for.
No dumpster?
That's good, yeah.
Any other questions? Okay? Okay, thank you. I'm watching you.
The shape of the building is sort of a marketing strategy.
I like that, yeah. It's good.
You just referenced.
That's very nice, because it was public and. I forget.
Is there anyone else in the audience that'd like to speak in this matter? Okay. Do we have a motion there?
Mr. Chairman, our motion, uh, to approve the conditional use for a semi-public use within an A3 district for the property located at 3730 Hur Road, parcel number 78-29319, according to the Savannah Township Zoning Resolution Section 502, with the following conditions. That the applicant install adequate landscaping on the south side of the property, um, along with the, um, approval of the conditional use to be submitted for the 43 conditions submitted by the relevant agencies and presented on December 24, 2019, in this county's plan and conditional report.
Second.
Mr. Lamont?
Yes.
Is that me?
Yes.
I'm rattling hard, yes.
Mr. Schlafter?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Thank you.
Second on the agenda is a various request for a lot width minimum of 100 feet required to 18.93 feet provided for a property located at 9500 West Central Avenue, parcel number 77-00601, Savannah Township Zoning Regulation Section 503. Darrell, the staff report, please.
Subject site consists of an irregular shaped parcel with 85 feet of frontage on Central Avenue. Parcel was originally part of a larger parcel that was a portion of a planned unit development approved in 2004. The lot is undeveloped except for a private sanitary sewer lift station currently on the site. Through a series of events including foreclosure, lot splits, and lot combines, the applicant acquired the subject parcel in 2015. As neither the original PUD nor new PUD were ever enacted on this parcel, the development standards of the original zone classification of A3 agriculture apply to this site. Section 503 of the zoning resolution requires a minimum lot width of 150 feet for an A3 zone parcel. The existing lift station is to be dedicated to the Lucas County Sanitary Engineers Office for public use. However, that dedication cannot occur until the parcel is split with the lift station on its own parcel to be owned by the county. Lot splits are conducted through the Lucas County Plan Commission. As of the minimum required lot width for an A3 zone parcel is 150 feet, the Plan Commission will not process the split until a variance has been approved by the Savannah Township Board of Zoning Appeals. Therefore, the applicant is requesting a 131.07 foot variance in order to split the lot with a new frontage of 18.93 feet. Staff recommends approval of the requested variance from the required minimum lot width of 150 feet in an A3 zone district to 18.93 feet provided, a variance of 131.07 feet for the property located at 9500 Central Avenue for the following two reasons. One, approval of this variance should not present a negative impact upon the public good or neighboring properties or impair the visibility or safety of the traveling public. And two, approval of this variance should not alter the intent of the Savannah Township zoning resolution. And the applicant is here as well this evening to address any questions.
Okay, any questions for Darrell? Any applicant that'd like to step forward and speak? Please.
How you doing?
Very good, thanks, man.
It's been a few years on that side of the town.
Yeah.
The reason we're asking for a variance right now is the county seems to be kind of in a rush to get this, uh, lift station, uh, accepted. It's been operated for a long time as a private lift station, it was not accepted by the county. Uh, it's an, it's an extremely large lift station, it's supposed to cover over 2,200 homes. And so the county has it targeted as the major lift station in this section of the county, perhaps even going into Ridgefield Township. And because of their interest in wanting to get it done sooner rather than later, we're asking for variance, uh, we know that the rest of the property, the purchase of the property's gonna have to figure out how they're gonna build the entrance, because they can't do it on their own feet. So that's, that's kind of in a nutshell over that. We want to get this approved if we can and get the split done, so the county can go ahead and get that first.
Take your name for the record, please.
I'm sorry, Doc, please.
Thank you, appreciate it. Any questions of the applicant?
I have a question. Who, who owns that property?
Well, it's owned by a, uh, owner, uh, Water Sis, Savannah LLC.
Okay, so they own that, all that section over there? I mean, is that attached to their property?
Um, the, can you put that map back up?
This one?
The one with the colors, easy to see.
Yeah, I can. There you go.
That one?
We own all that, the top line in red. This lift station sits right on the corner of Central where it's at its narrowest. I don't know why they built a lift station around Central Avenue. They should have put it back from Central, in my opinion, but then again, I didn't have anything to say about it. So, uh, that's why we're asking for that. If it were built back for them, you'd get the split without the variance.
Okay, does that piece of property become landlocked, like?
No. It's not much, but it's close. There, there is an, uh, 18 feet, uh, that we still own.
Okay. That, that was my question, I was, I didn't know what was gonna happen to the rest of that property. You know, if we approved this and give it to the county, then whoever owns the rest of that property could not have access to it.
Well, um, the property is under contract, and they know they've got to buy more property to build. And they know it'll be coming back to the township and Lucas County Plan Commission for a cycle. And that'll be part of the cycle.
Okay, 'cause that's what I was gonna ask too, is, is this the minimum the county needs?
Yeah, what, yeah, what's, do we know what the minimum is? For a frontage?
150.
150 is what's required for the A3.
So this is, I guess, the, the smallest amount I guess they could request for? Eighty five, right?
No. Well, it's at 85 now, um.
That's, it's already.
Right, so the splits approved, then there would be the 18, 18.93 will remain with the parent parcel. And then the other, what are we talking, 67?
That's a part of a right-of-way for them.
67 feet or whatever it is will remain with the lift station.
Gotcha.
And the variance will be for the parent property, right?
Right.
So if we're splitting it, the variance will be with the parent property, which otherwise is a useless asset.
You have a question, applicant?
No, that's it.
Does anyone else would like to speak on this matter? You have to come to the podium and sign.
I guess I didn't hear exactly what was going on there. Um, I'm at the Griffin Island property, just east of that little 85-foot section there. I am 444.
Can you?
80 acres? Or 80 acres, or the?
No, no.
20 acres?
Yeah.
Okay.
So you own, oops. Good speech here?
Yeah, right there.
Okay.
So I'm not exactly sure what you're, what you were referring to, how far you're going, is it the east?
The, the property that will remain with the original parcel is to the west.
Oh, okay, that's.
Yeah, the, the lift station runs up against your property. And that, that parcel will be cut off, I think it's like, what, four acres or something like that? And then what's left will remain part of the, the main part, parcel.
You're talking about the 85-foot, where you're, where you're?
85-foot, yeah. You're gonna cut off what they need for the lift station. The remaining piece of property will be less of the lift station. So it won't be up next to your property at all.
Any others? Like to speak? Okay? We have to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Make a motion for the variance request for a lot width minimum of 150 feet required to 8.18.93 feet provided for the property located at 9500 West Central Avenue, parcel number 77-00601, uh, the Zoning Town, Township, Savannah Township Zoning Resolution Section 503.
I'll second that one.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Hubbard?
Yes.
Mr. Schlafter?
Yes.
Mr. Lamont?
Yeah.
Okay, that motion carries? Our third item on the agenda, I'm going to accuse myself and have, uh, Don Miller step into the chairmanship, and then Jason Levine's gonna come in and backfill. So I will step aside.
Okay, what the record group reflects, that, uh, Mr. Levine, Mr. Davis? And Darrell, if we can have the, uh, the report for the variance request for a maximum building height from 45 feet, required to 62 feet 10 inches, provided for the properties located at 6364, 6358, 6376, 6370, West Central Avenue, and 3128 Plainview, parcel number 7858201, 7858537, 7858207, 7858204, 7858531, according to the Zoning Resolution Section 1403.
The applicant is seeking a variance from the required maximum building height of 45 feet in a C2 zone district as stipulated in Section 1403 of the Savannah Township Zoning Resolution. The request is for a variance of 17 feet 10 inches in order to construct a five-story hotel 62 feet tall. The subject site consists of a combination of five former parcels at the northwest corner of Plainview Drive and Central Avenue. US 23 right-of-way abuts the property to the east. In 2016, the state of Ohio executed a right-of-way take for the upcoming reconfiguration of the US 23 Central Avenue interchange. This resulted in the closing of the Plainview-Central intersection and the rerouting of Plainview to intersect with Wilford Drive. Furthermore, the reconfiguration of the interchange required an additional take of the subject property where it abuts the southbound exit ramp of US 23 to Central Avenue. These changes resulted in the loss of approximately a quarter acre or 12.5% of the original property. The applicant maintains that this has produced a hardship to constructing the originally planned 84-unit hotel on the site. Staff recommends approval of the requested variance from the maximum building height requirement of 45 feet in a C2 zone district to 62 feet 10 inches provided, a variance of 17 feet 10 inches for the properties located at 6364, 6358, 6376, 6370, West Central Avenue, and 3128 Plainview, for the following three reasons. One, the taking of acreage by the state of Ohio for the right-of-way improvements has resulted in a hardship not resulting from any action by the applicant. Two, approval of this variance should not present a substantial detriment to the public good or neighboring properties or impair the visibility or safety of the traveling public. And three, approval of this variance should not substantially alter the intent of the Savannah Township zoning resolution.
Any questions for Darrell?
How do you want the chairman? Just looking at this drawing really quick, and I know we're not talking about, uh, we're talking about height of a building, but I don't see on this drawing- Um, just looking at this drawing really quick, and I know we're not talking about, uh, we're talking about height of a building, but I don't see on this drawing where a fire truck can get all the way around that building. Who are we talking to? Are, are you here for that?
I am.
Oh. That's what I asked him, I thought you did. Yeah, I just wanted you to hear for that one thing.
Yeah.
If you must stay with me for a minute.
I don't think we have to choose somebody to speak to.
You have the, you have this, I don't know what site plan is submitted, just for the record, I'm not civil on this, but Ryan had.
Yeah, I saw you're not on there yet.
Right, so Ryan, okay.
And this helps?
No, because this, so this is a revised site plan. And this site plan is a result of Ryan having with fire chief about that issue. And the fire chief wanted to, so they added, they added fi, uh, access drive here for fire lane.
Uh-huh.
Um, they pushed this dumpster back and they added a little more, um, access to. So those access points came from, based on a meeting that Ryan had with fire chief. So they are providing.
Do you have paperwork on that?
Paperwork.
On the fire chief?
Uh, I don't, no, I don't think they made work, no. I did see the fire chief had a chamber one last time he said. Yeah, the, the fire, the fire. That's what I was saying.
Does this help any? It still blocks it.
Does, does Darrell have it revised or gave him a moral? I don't know. Okay. They added this and this to give them access.
I thought you have a dumpster here.
They pushed the dumpster back.
Oh, you're so.
The dumpster was, the dumpster was here, now it's back here.
It was here.
Yeah, so they pushed that back and then, if you notice, there's nothing on this side. And they added, they added this.
So.
I like the, I can find this in the fire chief's file.
Which is not really good. You should really probably get us something updated.
Do you know what the landscaping buffer is gonna be here for the, on the backside of the hotel? Is it similar?
There's a residential house.
No, what is it, a residential house from the back, so?
On the side, yeah.
Fifteen foot.
Yes, yeah, thank you. Whatever show on the site plan. Looks like, uh.
It says fifteen foot landscape.
Landscapes over, and thirty foot little setback.
I don't understand the show, I mean, it must be stupid, the fire truck can't get around the building. I don't understand that.
And the, the landscape.
Yeah, so that takes care of that.
Yeah, but the problem is, is.
So, so how does the, so I'm just not seeing this, how does the fire chief make this in the back of his car?
Yeah.
The fire chief didn't write around the back, but I guess the fire chief told Ryan that.
They get fired up.
I didn't get that.
Okay, so they get on the side.
So Ryan, the back didn't access the back, based on what was provided.
We should still get an update. Okay, now at least I understand.
Yeah, I think maybe, I mean, we might make it conditional, maybe, uh, you know, aid and advice up there.
Or just make it conditional for the party's approval.
Right. Yeah, it is, it's, you'd still have to submit.
Right, right, right.
Before we go approve something.
Well, they're here on height anyway.
Yeah, the process, the site plans, the construction plans still have to be approved, the party's gonna be doing the construction plans.
Right, right.
So in that, you know, any turd.
It's gonna be a fence now. Once you read the charter, if there's no other variance, correct me if I'm wrong, oh yeah, correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, if we don't tell you to put a fence or approve the, this drawing, then it doesn't come back here.
Well, we, we still have to go to site, remember, this is just for the height.
Right.
We're only here on the height.
Right.
All the rest of that stuff still goes through site plan approval, the township still has to approve it. I mean, all agencies look at it. This is just for the height.
Okay.
Well, you can put whatever condition you want.
Right, right, I totally understand what you're saying, I'm not trying to give you a rough time. I'm just saying, if I own that house next door, and you're gonna put a fifteen-foot buffer and you're gonna put trees in like that, Christ, I'll be dead by then. All right? I wanna see a, I wanna see a condition put in there for a fence before I will approve, uh, the height. Just so we don't get into catch twenty-two when if, if somebody else misses it down the road. This is our last opportunity possibly, unless they wanna know their.
So where do you want the fence in the, in the back?
By the property.
Some residential?
Yeah, from the, from the, the house.
Joe, did you hear from, from anybody on this, the, the property owner? To the north, I guess?
No, we have not, but this will have to go through site pla, project plan review, site plan review. Um, so the requirement for a commercial property budding residential is an eight-foot privacy fence.
Okay.
You are correct. Okay.
So it's a non-issue.
And then it's a non-issue, right? I didn't know that was part of that deal.
Yeah, commercial budding residential.
We had fence problems here for years, infence problems. I didn't know it ever got, they ever did that.
I love it.
Savania Township, that's what I'm saying.
So. Who, who is the applicant on this?
Uh, most of them.
Oh, it is, okay, same, they, they started it before the recession, so it's just, okay, so now they're picking a backup. Okay, that's kinda what I was wondering.
Yeah.
Yeah, they were here probably before any of you guys were here, a long time ago on this.
Yeah, and like, and like Darrell was just, that, that right-of-way take and losing the light right there, it's really, so now they gotta go off study.
Okay, yeah, so we'll, we'll go with it then.
Yeah, that makes sense, all right.
Especially with no opposition.
Any other public trauma on this?
Any other, uh, any other discussion on this matter?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion for approval of the variance request for maximum building height from forty-five feet required to sixty-two feet, ten inches, provided for the properties located at six-three, six-four, six-three, five-eight, six-three, seven-six, six-three, seven-zero, West Central Avenue, and three-one-two-eight Plainview, parcels numbers seventy, five-eight, two zero one, five-eight, five-three-seven, five-eight, two zero seven, five-eight, two zero four, five-eight, five-three-one, works with the Savania Township Zoning Resolution, Section, Section fourteen oh three.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Strohm?
Yes.
Mr. Schwechter? I'm sorry. Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
And I'm sure, sure I know which one here?
Let the record reflect that, uh, Dr. is back as chair. Last item on the agenda is a variance request for parking on the east side from fifteen. The minimum setback from a right-of-way line required to five feet provided for the property located at five-three-one-zero Elmer Drive, parcel number seven-eight dash three-eight-nine-six-one, Savania Township Zoning Regulation, Section two-nine oh nine. Darrell, staff report, please.
Subject property consists of an approximate half-acre vacant lot located on the northwest panel of Reynolds Road and Elmer Drive. The gross acreage of the site is approximately point nine seven acres. However, substantial public right-of-way limitations reduce the net acres to point five nine acres, a reduction of approximately thirty-nine percent of the parcel. The applicant maintains that the reduced size of the lot extremely limits the commercial use of the lot. The applicant intends to construct a five thousand eight hundred and forty square foot veterinary clinic on the site and is requesting a ten-foot variance from the required minimum setback for parking spaces. Section two-nine oh nine of the Savania Township Zoning Resolution requires a fifteen-foot setback from the public right-of-way line. The applicant is asking, asking to provide a five-foot parking setback. If approved, this variance would concurrently reduce the front landscape strip in a commercially zoned district from fifteen feet as required by Section three thousand one of the zoning resolution to five feet provided. Savania Township Board of Zoning Appeals has granted two variances to this applicant for the subject parcel in the recent pass. In October twenty seventeen, the BZA approved a twenty-foot side setback variance to allow the new building to be set back ten feet from the northern property line. Approval of this variance was subject to the condition that a solid privacy fence be installed along the northern and western property lines. In May twenty eighteen, the BZA approved another twenty-foot variance. This variance to the front setback allows the building to be fifteen feet from the right-of-way of Elmer Drive. Staff recommends approval with condition of the requested ten-foot variance from the minimum parking setback from a public right-of-way in a commercial zone from fifteen feet required to five feet provided for the property located at fifty-three-ten Elmer Drive for the following three reasons. One, the limited buildable area of the subject property presents a practical difficulty for the development of a commercial use on the site. Two, approval of this variance should not present a negative impact upon the public good or neighboring properties or impair the visibility or safety of the traveling public. Three, approval of this variance should not alter the intent of the Savania Township Zoning Resolution. Staff further recommends that the Board of Zoning Appeals approve the variance request subject to the condition that the applicant install adequate screening and landscaping as determined by the BZA within the five foot between the parking area and the right-of-way of Reynolds Road.
Thank you, Darrell. Can you bring up the slide that shows the red line, blue line, yellow line? All right, and then just run through that for us.
Okay.
Would that always signify?
Sure. So the parcel boundary is the red square.
Mm-hmm.
Red line going all the way around. The blue line, the light blue line, I'm not sure how visible it is actually.
Does that help, though?
Sure. The light blue line represents the right-of-way from Reynolds and from Elmer Drive. So everything in this section here is right-of-way. The requirement for parking is fifteen feet off the right-of-way. So to have parking in here, the applicant would have to be no closer than the solid yellow line. And he's requesting a variance of ten feet from that fifteen feet to put, and these are just approximate here, but the dash yellow is roughly five feet from the right-of-way line. And the right-of-way line is twenty-five feet from the curb, just for reference. So going by the zoning requirement, the parking would be thirty feet from the curb. If the variance is granted, he'd be thirty feet from the curb.
That doesn't have any adverse effect on signage location, or there isn't any bearing on that?
Uh, it doesn't. It may, might make it more difficult for them to, for the applicants to find a location for the sign, but that would be the applicant's concern.
So really, I mean, I don't see we're pushing that because of the right-of-way setback being so large. I mean, this variance isn't gonna really impede visibility.
No.
Yeah. I don't know, I'm not sure this person understands it, but in case you guys haven't seen it.
Right, because the, the corolla here is such a, a big chunk taken out of the corolla of the.
Yeah, I just wonder if they understood that, I don't know if they're here today or not. But that seemed to be their.
Oh, the park, the park there, you mean?
That seemed to be their concern, that, that, I mean, maybe by giving that variance or pushing traffic closer in the road is a, it could be a visibility hazard, which, I'm not sure if they really understood how close they were or how far back they are.
Darrell, there's a site plan submitted with this application that shows how that was used, or proposed to be used.
There is one, um, that does not adequately reflect the right-of-way lines, however.
I feel like you saw some of that, pretty much.
Give me one moment. So that's the origin, that it doesn't show the right-of-way?
Well, it was, it was unsubmitted, but it doesn't.
I'm sorry, I thought you had that up there.
It's the same as this?
Yeah. Yes. However, it's not accurate, the right-of-way is not accurate. Okay.
Okay, so we don't have one that by showing the right-of-way in its correct spot?
No.
Okay. All right, any other questions of Darrell before we hear from the applicant?
Hey Darrell, can you run through with the, on here, like, what the previous variance is? We, we approved it as one for context. Um. I remember that one was on the backside of the lot, I believe. Remember, I was talking about fencing, the problem.
Right.
Um, and then one on, uh.
He did.
On the side, the other side of, um.
Does it be the, uh?
East side, yeah.
Wouldn't it?
Yeah, I think so.
There's one from, on the south side along Elmer Drive, um, a twenty-foot variance, so instead of being, the building being constructed thirty-five feet from the right-of-way, the BZA approved it to be fifteen feet from the right-of-way. Uh, that was.
Off Elmer.
I'm sorry?
Off Elmer.
Yes, that was in May twenty eighteen. Uh, prior to that, there's one in October twenty seventeen, and that was for the north side of the property. Again, that was a twenty-foot variance, uh, reducing it from thirty feet required to ten feet provided. And that was with the condition that a solid privacy fence be installed to accommodate on the north side and also on the west side, an eight-foot barrier along with any landscaping that is required.
Okay. Okay, yeah, would, uh, state your name for the record?
My partner, I tried to purchase the property anymore, it's available. A person that owned it wanted to sell both of his properties for about half a thousand dollars, so that was in our budget. The person that lives to the west, I tried to buy her property too, and since she, I think, knew what I was gonna do, she was trying to sell her commercial property, and she was a very nice individual, it wasn't in our budget as well. So we tried to make this property in the corner a little larger to accommodate and facilitate my staff parking and our clientele parking. Because it's a corner lot, I, I think some of the restrictions, I put us a little bit, that's why I'm here for the third time. So what we're trying to accommodate now is a building to, to facilitate enough exam rooms and hospital space that, that we're gonna require to expand our operation, of which right now, we, we don't have enough room in our hospital right now, we're at twenty-eight fifty, and, and we're trying to use the most of this property without getting, um, into safety restrictions and things like the law that, that we're talking about now. The signage, um, I'm not so sure what restrictions we have for signage, I don't know anything about that yet, but where that arrow is, that's where we want to put the sign. Right, somewhere in the, in the southeast corner. So as you, and I don't know how close we put it, I don't, I don't know, restrictions on that, if you guys would have to talk to that, um, and you're gonna like to keep it.
You can't do it. You can't put a sign in the right-of-way.
Right, well, I obviously wanna try and put it in my property wherever it may be, but I wanted it to be close to the road, and there's also gonna be some type of, um, signage on my property itself.
On the building, the sign?
Yeah.
On the building facade, is what you mean?
Yes, sir, in the front. So as people, as people come in to the township coming north of Reynolds, they don't miss the turn on Elmer. Because we're not gonna have a curb cut on Reynolds, the curb cut's gonna be on Elmer. And since I'm Reynolds Road Animal Hospital, I felt like we could move off Reynolds Road. So that's why we decided to purchase this lot and with the understanding that we were going to make it two levels, the first floor being the hospital, the second floor being administrative. The first floor being the hospital, the second floor being administrative. The, the fencing will coincide with whatever we have to do. I know there's a fence already to the west that we haven't been able to, that's what the Federal Credit Union has. There's no fencing on set yet. So, what we've done, right, we purchased the lot, we brought down the Federal Credit Union, we got two variances, we cut down a bunch of trees, we basically made it a soccer field, and we had to wait for some veterinary architects to help us create a veterinary drawing with the help of architecture by design to finish the project here locally. We used, uh, architecture from around Cleveland, so we had two architects. So, that's why it's taken so long. And, now we're trying to facilitate our parking, and that's why we're here today. Um, I'm, I'm not so sure about the visibility, I haven't measured it, but when you, when you look at the lot, it, it, I think it'll accommodate what we need. I just don't want, what we're trying to inhibit is, my staff's about a staff of 25 employees. Now, they're all not there at the same time, but 15, 17 people may be there at the same time working on animals, and I may have to increase my staff because we're gonna provide more veterinary services, and I am feeling that to eliminate increasing growth in, in our, so, I need more services and care. One thing I will add, and I, and I want the board to remember, for anyone here in the audience that, that wants to talk about this, is not going to be a boarding facility. Um, I, I do not want people to be bothered by animals barking. That, that would, in my opinion, create a bad situation with the locals. And, um, there will be an area in the back, within our fence, that the animals will be relieving themselves, that they will have to clean every day. And also, in the, in the northwest corner, there seems to be a lot of standing water there, especially in the spring, and I think it's a, it's a hazard for mosquitoes and maybe even spreading of some viruses and disease. I'd, I'd like to try and put some type of situation there where we're relieving that from those local homes and making it safer for the community. I don't know exactly what kind of engineering that entails, but, uh, in my mind, that's kinda what I'd like to do.
Come back next year on that?
Yeah, exactly. So.
Did you, did you enlarge the building since you were here before?
Um.
Is that?
A 9B.
Okay, so is that, is that part of why we're here? You actually increased parking from what you submitted?
That's exactly right.
Okay.
That's exactly right. Since we use the, Dwight and I call them professionals out of Cleveland. They took Dwight's work, and Dwight gave them a perimeter, and they unfortunately expanded it by 9B to facilitate the rooms and accommodate the boarding facility for animals that are getting that, not strictly boarding. And that's why we're, we can't, that's why I asked the woman to the west, if I could purchase her, her land, it's .29 acres, she wanted a little bit more than I could handle. And I know we have 30 feet from them, so rather than asking you for a variance on that, we thought that maybe we could try and make some more room and public parking and, and not infringe on her property. My plans in the future are ours by her. Um, if she ever sells her residential property, then our limitations are closed.
Okay.
What will you, something to do with that property, then?
Parking. I definitely have to expand. Um, I think there's enough veterinary hospitals in the downtown to accommodate on the administrative. But at this point, I mean, my hospitals walk in each other. And, we're very busy, honestly.
So, if you did purchase the property to the west, maybe that becomes staff parking and client parking would be?
Or we, or we extend a little bit of our, um, landscape to the west. More of a, you know, maybe a grass with parks, I say.
Mm-hmm.
And that's why I don't want to stay. There's a lot, there's kinda water that runs along those homes, and there's an apartment complex back there. I, when I talked to Daryl about the property to the west, he said, well, the property to the west, it, we want it, we believe that the township wants that to be commercial because it matches the facility, the property to the north that extends past our property, so it all kinda aligns. And I think that's where the commercial property is, where it's stopping.
I do like the on-the-road entrance, far better than the last one right here. So, this is, yeah, this is, this is much.
Do you know that there's setback, there is some consistency on Reynolds with what they're asking? Do you have any idea?
Um, I would have to.
Yeah, I should, it's, it's fine. But I, I also have a curb cut off of Reynolds, so it's also.
And I did wanna mention that property to the west, it's currently zoned residential. The Savannah Township Land Use Plan recommends it as commercial. So, should, let's head down the road, a zone change request to commercial for that lot come along. It's likely to be supported by the Lucas County Plan Commission and the Township Zoning Commission.
Anyone see that?
Yeah.
Neighbors' letter to.
I mean, that's just to address the letter, though, I, I think you're right, I think the letter doesn't actually understand the fact of the right-of-way.
Yeah, I mean, they're making, like, the curb cuts off Reynolds, and when it's on Elmer, and, yeah, and the right-of-way, so.
Has Bernice sent the audience back in?
Yeah, I was gonna say. Oh, okay. Well, that's even better, instead.
What's that?
Would you like to?
Would you like to speak about the letter?
Or did you want it to just speak to itself?
Okay, come, come to the, we're gonna switch out.
Sorry.
We're gonna bring Bernice in.
I'm glad she's here. Give her a chance, come on.
So, if you'd write your name and then state your name for the record?
Bernice Myerboots, I am the property west of him. I did submit the letter, I have concern about the traffic and taking more clearance away from that intersection. Like I said, there was an accident just two weeks ago, and we had pedestrians going out and down the street trying to access the trail, so they stopped right there at that light, and they didn't have any obstruction at that point. You know, and I, and I looked down Reynolds Road, where there were other businesses, there are signages that come clear back, telephone poles that clear back. I don't know if that's gonna infringe on that area that's consistent all along there. So, it is concerning to me. And he did come to me and ask if I had a property. I did submit a proposal, but I, he'll come out, he'll just give me that. So, this is where he's standing.
Do you, do you understand the part about the right-of-way?
Just for your own information, that.
On the front?
Yeah, on the front. So, what they're asking is, it's, I just, number one, they don't have a curb cut on Reynolds, so in terms of visibility, and that, similar to what you're saying, that some of the others that have things out front there, they can't eliminate, that's all on the right-of-way. I just wanna make sure you.
Right.
Okay.
I understand.
Okay.
Any other questions for Bernice? Anyone else in the audience like to speak on this matter? Okay, we're gonna go into executive session for a moment, and we will be back soon. At 6:00 as well. Is everybody here? Who's on next meeting? Do we convene the meeting at 6:29? Do we have a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion. I make a motion that we let this pass for 30 days for the next meeting. Uh, we need the site plan showing the correct size of the building. Uh, we have a couple, three drawings, just don't correctly show the square footage. The correct, uh, location of the right-of-way.
You understand what I'm saying, the right-of-way lines? And, uh, location of the variance that you're asking for. Anything else?
Is that, I am just kinda, please, is that clear? I mean, just, okay.
You're, you're asking for more information for our.
Yeah, there's some inaccuracies, some stuff missing.
Yeah, that's the last thing, I, I think they're trying to say.
Yeah, come to the, the, the chat record.
I'd rather make sure it's for your own good, you kinda know what we're, yeah, are we doing this.
Yeah, yeah, totally. So, the reason why, um, Dwight, um, didn't, we had a couple meetings, and we were gonna do the site plan, and I was asking him, and we already have some elevation drawings that we want to, um, continue with. But the reason why those guys didn't do all the work yet is because they're waiting for this to pass. Because we, we, we already have a good money, a lot of money out there for architects, uptown architects. This plan for us, if it's gonna work effectively, um, we feel like we need these requirements to get things done too. So, we're not bottlenecked, and we don't get accidents in our parking lot, which has happened already.
But I think even with the current drawings you have, the variance passed tonight, that drawing would be invalid. Um, and then, I mean, probably another variance for, for more parking spaces, or for, you know, not enough parking spaces.
So, what we're.
I'm not sure I can put it, I, I didn't see the drawing.
Yeah, so what we're saying, it's not, they're not asking you to go spend money to redesign, we're asking you what's here is not accurate, we don't think. We don't think you're showing where the right-of-way line is, it's kinda going through parking, and, yeah, so that's true. And you're, you're building dimensions on the building versus down here, two different numbers.
They agree. I'd like to see the final site plan as well.
Yeah.
And where all the drawings are, I completely agree with you. Um, I'm eagerly awaiting what that will look like, and I think they need more information.
Yeah.
Definitely. So, so you're saying that you're gonna approve it, you're going to hold it for three days, so that you guys can gather more information, and then make decisions in the next one for three days?
Yeah, you're gonna provide the information.
Yeah.
You need the information from, from you.
Right. My partner's excellent.
Yes, yes, you're right.
I don't know, I'm gonna go work on it.
Just so you know, we're not providing any information.
No, no, you're right, yeah, you do like that, so.
And we certainly would, would not discourage you and your neighbor having another conversation.
I'm, I'm, I appreciate it, I totally understand why you're working.
Yeah, again, that's our 30-day continuance to the next scheduled meeting, which will be June.
Third.
Third, Monday, June 3rd.
June 3rd is, I, I know.
Yes, June 3rd.
Okay. And, the sooner that you can provide that information to Daryl, the, uh, the better.
Okay, a second?
Yeah, go ahead.
A second, a motion.
Okay, Mr. Lam.
Yes.
Mr. Schlechter.
Yes.
Mr. Elmer.
Yes.
Mr. Melch.
Yes.
Mr. Hayes.
Yes. Hey, do I have a motion for adjournment?
Send a motion to adjourn?
Sure. Yes. Motion, second.
Okay, um, Mr. Hayes.
Yes.
Mr. Melch.
Yes.
Mr. Elmer.
Yes.
Mr. Schlechter.
Yes.
Mr. Page.
Thank you, thanks, everybody.